Okay, here we go. Getting ready for mic check. I just had to turn the lights on in the overflow room. Microphone number one. Check, one, two, three. Mic number one. One, two, three, one, two, three. Check, check. Microphone one. Microphone number two. One, two, three. Microphone number two. Check, check. One, two, three. Microphone two. Super mic. Mic number three. One, two, three. Microphone number three. A, B, C. Mic number three. Mic number four. President mic. One, two, three, four. Mic number four. President mic. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, one, two, three. This is mic number five. One, two, three. Number five. Number five. And microphone number six. One, two, three, four, five, six. Microphone number six. Lastly, the podium mic. One, two, three. Podium mic. The best sounding of all of them, in my opinion. Podium mic. One, two, three, one, two, three. If any of them didn't sound as good, let me know. I'm gonna test them again since I made all that racket with the mic cables. This is six. Okay, that's a clear sign we need more mic cables. Newer ones. This is number one. This is, this is number two. All right, I'm gonna fiddle with two. I can barely even hear two now. One, two, three. I'm gonna fiddle, fiddle with two. Fiddle with two. Here we go. Number three. Number three. Okay, it seems okay. Number four. Number four seems okay. Five seems all right. One, two, three. It's a little low, but I'll turn it up. One, two, three, four, five. Five is better. Number six. Microphone, microphone number six. One, two, three, four, five, six. Going back to two. All right, two sounds better. One, two, three, four, five, six. This is mic number two. I think we're as good as we're gonna get at this point. Thank you. And just one more time testing the podium. That sounds good. Okay. All right. I guess you could post on the website. I'm gonna be muting here in a second. Okay, muting in three, two, one.
I'm proud of that idea.
I am, I am.
I would ask her.
Oh yes, that's right.
Yeah.
So Sean's gonna give you two.
Yes.
I could hardly believe she started off with, I said, I kicked the bucket.
That's not good.
She actually did. It was sort of a rich place. It's gonna say she died, she says, kicked the bucket. What's that?
I know.
So.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting's order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in the true republic for which stands one nation on the ground individual with liberty and justice for all.
Here with us this evening, we have Roger Brooker, trustee; Jay Grover, trustee; Sherri Stephens, trustee; Jude Kuhn, our district clerk; Dr. Brian Graham, superintendent; Mashal Drayer, president; Sue Marston, vice president; Joy Lamarcus, trustee; Danielle Bruno, trustee, is excused this evening; we have John Fitzpatrick, assistant superintendent of curriculum staff development and human resources; Cheryl Cardone, assistant superintendent of people personnel services; and Dr. Robert Merkel, assistant superintendent for school business and finance. Couple announcements, if you could silence your cellphones, please, and just note there's an emergency exit directly behind me and directly in front of me in case we need to leave unexpectedly. And if I can have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, please.
All in favor.
And a second.
I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carried six zero. And if I could have a motion to approve the minutes from March tenth, please.
All in favor.
And a second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carried six zero. We have some student ambassadors this evening. If we could have an introduction for our, uh, one of our stretch from the middle school, please.
Hi, everyone. I have the pleasure of introducing Colin Green, who is our student council publicity supervisor, and Oliver Stuarti, who is our student council secretary. Both Colin and Oliver are eighth graders at VCMS. They are both members of JV Deka. They each play three sports and are members of the band as well.
Hello, my name is Oliver Stuarti.
And I'm Colin Green.
Recently, student council held our March Madness Minute to Win it event.
Students were able to come and play a variety of Minute to Win it games and compete against their friends.
We also had four inflatable games, including Hungry Hippos, Jousting, Wrecking Ball, and a sports target for students to compete on.
Everyone had a lot of fun, and we are looking forward to having this annual event.
Last week, the middle school PTA held a penny war, and students were able to donate change in order to become the winning grade level.
The sixth grade ended up winning and got to sign Mrs. Heitz and Miss Mober at the glow party that took place after school last Friday.
Students were able to buy glow swag and dance to a G D J in the gym. It was a great time for everyone.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome you from high school.
Good evening, Dr. Graham, district administrators, and board of education members. I am beyond thrilled to introduce to you Brooke Christensen. Not only is she a senior here at Grand Island High School, she is going to be going to the University of Akron next year to play Division One track and field. And she is such a humble, wonderful young lady. She is now, as of this past weekend, an All-American on shot put. So, Christen, Brooke. You know how many our school and our community is so proud, and as a mom of girls, you are such a role model to female athletes. So congratulations.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Brooke Christensen, and I am a senior this year at the high school. I am the class of 2025 president and the student council vice president. And I'm on the track team. I wanted to take a moment to share a little bit about what has been going on recently in our school. Two weeks ago, it was our Clash of the Vikings Week. Overall, this was a huge success with the seniors winning, but we also did something new this year. Each class carried around a water jug that was their class color and collected spare change from their classmates and school staff. Although this was a clash competition trying to see which class could raise the most money, it was for an amazing cause. Dakari Jackson, Jr., a senior at Tapestry High School in Buffalo, was recently diagnosed with acute B-cell leukemia. We were able to collect $3,000 in spare change to donate to the Jackson family. Finally, winter sports have wrapped up. The boys' basketball team had a very successful season, winning their first NFL title, and took a trip to Buffalo State to play in their first sectional championship game since 1992. Grand Island also had the NFL Player of the Year, Jace Wilkie. Wrestler Cole Randall took a trip to Albany to compete in the state tournament. Bowler John Coram went to Syracuse for the state tournament. And I won my third sectional title in the weight throw, earning me a trip to Staten Island to compete at the indoor track championships where I placed third. The past weekend, I went to Virginia Beach for the Adidas Track Nationals where I became an All-American. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope to see you soon.
First, I want to know enthusiastic you were when the seniors went to that.
I was excited.
So, congratulations.
Thanks.
I am very proud of you.
Thanks.
I've known you for now nine years, and I think I, I was just telling you as I walked in, that I would see you so determined, working either with a private coach or your brother on the football field in the summer, just practicing your technique, and that has been true for you every year. Is there anybody, you know, is there anybody else you'd like to shine a spotlight on that's helped you get to where you are today?
Um, my brother, definitely.
Yeah, Michael.
Oh, everything.
That's great. That's really great. And your parents?
Yes.
Very good. And your coaches, too, they are so proud of you. They, they do a great job in shining that spotlight, and these are just some recent pictures, right? So tell us about this All-American event.
So I went to Virginia Beach for the Adidas Track Nationals. Um, and then they took the top nine to finals, so you get three throws, and then nine people, uh, are the top nine, get three more. Um, I went into finals eighth. Um, and then I was gonna finish sixth until my last throw, which I had to reset twice, 'cause my, it was not looking good.
Yeah.
So I reset twice and then had my best throw of the day, putting me in fifth.
Yeah, congratulations. It's a really great honor and everything, right? So when you leave us, and do you, do you have a sense of what you might want to study?
Um, I'm gonna study education.
Excellent. Very good. We're very proud of you. Uh, and, um, I guess, uh, with all of these accolades, uh, thinking about competing at the collegiate level and a D1 program, you know, what are, what are some things that you're thinking about? Will you just focus on the weight throw, or will you do disc?
Um, hopefully I don't have to throw the disc.
Okay.
Um, but probably just do what I'm told.
Very good. I think you brought some of your medals. So would you bring them, and then look at the board, and we're gonna take a group picture, too. You'll start with Joy, and then she can pass them down to the public board. And so what you're, could you just go back to the mic and just describe what the board is looking at?
Um, there's a glass thing. That, I got that, I was the MVP of the field in section six.
Very nice.
Then there's a NISFA medal, that's just the public schools, um, New York State, and then the one that has like red on it, that's Federation, that's with the private schools. Um, and then that one that says Track Nationals on it, that's from this weekend.
I'm assuming that's it for high school now?
Um.
Except going into the regular track, right?
Yeah.
And do you have, um, do you have a goal for, for outdoor track this year?
Ideally, make it to states again, but we'll see.
And did you go last year?
Yeah.
And how far did you get?
Uh, I finished third in a shot put. I had two foot PR, and then I made it to the second day for the Federation meet.
What's your target, um, distance?
Uh.
What would you like to hit as a goal this, this spring?
Forty-two.
Forty-two feet?
E, yeah.
Excellent. Okay. Great. Would you take down a picture with the board?
Put your favorite one on for the picture. Or put them all on. No, put them all on. Put them all on. And then you can spread it out. You deserve it. Don't be embarrassed. You're just challenging. You don't have any of those. And anything.
Okay, I'm gonna take a few, right? Yeah, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take Dallas and Mary.
Thank you.
Get ready. Eyes open, big smile. Three, two, one. Very nice.
Okay, that brings us to public comment session, agenda irresolving. Okay, and then curriculum and instruction with, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi. The only item we have in curriculum and instruction is we're asking, uh, the board to approve the Grand Island varsity basketball team to participate in the twenty-five, twenty-six KSA Universal Basketball Tournament being held in Orlando, Florida. And what do you know about this tournament? All costs will be fundraised, uh, by the team themselves.
Okay, um, I know we have a couple questions. Does that include any expenses to the chaperones? So like the chaperone flights?
Yes.
Things like that. And then, um, as far as the chaperones, will there be any, um, it will fund as well the, um, cost for chaperoning while they're on the track, obviously, and things like that.
Yes.
There won't be a cost to the district for anything relating to the chaperones?
No, not at all.
I think that's what we want to be sure of.
Everything has to be fundraised, uh, by the kids and, um, the team themselves.
Okay. And it's not during school, right? It's on a vacation or something, so you won't, there won't be some, there won't be some pay?
Yeah, it's, uh, the dates are twelve twenty-eight, twenty-five to one-one twenty-six, so that's right through our break.
Okay, great. Um, if I could have a, does anyone else have any questions besides that? Okay, if I can have a motion to approve curriculum and instruction A, please.
All in favor.
And a second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carried six zero. That brings us to personnel instructional. If I could have a motion to approve instructional personnel P I one through P I five, please.
All in favor.
And a second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carried six zero.
I think we do have an introduction. Now, Mike.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce Ms. Mariana Floro. Stand up. As you guys saw the last board meeting, uh, Patrick Lester did accept an administration job somewhere else, um, which is fantastic for him and also a great opportunity for us at Sideway. So not often we get to do a March hire for a probationary teacher, but we are excited. Uh, that Mariana has been with us since last year. She started as a student teacher in Mrs. McDolphie's room, did a fantastic job, subbed for us almost every day from the end of student teaching throughout the end of the year, finished up her tests, became a TA at the start of this year, and has been a long-term sub in a special education classroom since about October fourteenth, um, up until tomorrow, where she's gonna step into a kindergarten classroom as a probationary teacher. So we are super excited for her to join us. Um, she's amazing at connecting with kids. She did a great job in special ed room, has tons of relations with the staff, and we are super excited that she is now a Sideway teacher. So congratulations.
Just checking any other intros. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel non-instructural. If I could have a motion to approve P I one through P I three, please.
All in favor.
And a second.
I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any extensions? Motion carried six zero. That brings us to finance with Dr. Merkel.
Uh, thank you. I've got three action items tonight. Uh, first item is some obsolete equipment from, um, buildings and grounds. The second one is, uh, sorry, from IT. The second item B is from, uh, same for buildings and grounds. And then item C is our internal audit report and the associated corrective, associated corrective action plan presented.
If I could have a motion for A through C, please.
All in favor.
And a second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
Thank you.
Any extensions? Motion carried six zero. And then brings us to the budget presentation.
Thank you very much. So I want to thank the board, as always, for the hard work that goes into, uh, building the budget and approving it later. and approving it later this year. Obviously, there's a lot of work that goes on with our administrators, our supervisors, principals, working with Bob and the team here to put together as thoughtful of a budget as we can that protects the fund balance and retains all the community mandated programs and continues to develop a long-term, sustainable budget to provide the best oversight program. So we're grateful to the board for their work in this process. As the board knows, much of the budget is built around the strategic plan goals and those are, we're very proud of that. We thank the board for approving those strategic plan goals this past December. And tonight, Bob, I see we're gonna give the board some updates on retirements and some other elements that are built into this budget. Is there anything you wanted to highlight on the agenda?
No, you know, it's only been a couple of weeks since the last time we met, so not a huge change in things, but we do have some more information on what the Senate and the Assembly are looking at compared to what the executive put out. So we'll talk about that a little bit. And then, you know, one of the big projects that I've been working on the last couple of weeks with the principals is to take a look at their equipment. So do you have some information on that as well?
All right, perfect. And just for the board, the last time you saw this slide, it listed seven GITA members, but today there are eight here. We talked about that at the last meeting, that there would be one more addition. So these are the positions where we have teachers getting ready to retire. I can tell you that we're gonna miss every single one of them. They're excellent teachers and their wisdom and expertise will be missed by our district for certain. There is the plan to replace seven of the eight positions that you see on the slide. There is one position that we will subtract through attrition, which is the secondary teaching assistant position. Any questions about that? So, go ahead, Bob.
So not a huge change in our expenditures to date. The, on the bottom, there is the gap with new requests. So the new requests that we've been working on, whittling down, is currently at $598,255. That does not include any money for equipment at this time. So moving on to page number eight. That's the information from the executive budget message that she gave back in January.
And this slide hasn't changed yet?
Correct, it has not.
But Bob definitely has some slides ahead of this that'll inform the board and the community of some possible changes that we might see in the enacted budget by her.
Correct, yep. So we're gonna see, so you know, the processes, the executive comes up with their proposal usually in January, then in March we'll see a one-house proposal typically. So if you take a look at this slide here, 25-26 is all the way to the right. So you see in the green there, that's the executive proposal. The assembly proposal is in orange there. It's quite a bit higher than the executive's proposal. The senate proposal again is a bit higher than hers. And the actual where we're gonna land is yet to be determined. So on the ensuing slides here, I've kind of highlighted some information that was contained in those one-house proposals. Some of it aligns with the executive proposal. One thing to keep in mind that we're gonna be keeping an eye on is, you know, some things are included in the budget legislation, but things can continuously change. Like I think the heat bill, I think, changed in like June of last year. So even if this stuff is or is not included in the April budget, it could still change in May or June or, you know, throughout the legislative session. So if you take a look at some of the one-house versus executive information here, you'll see in asterisks the things that agree with the executive budget proposal here. So you'll see on this first slide, slide number 10, this has, is in regards to foundation aid. So the executive budget and both the assembly and senate budgets all agree to update some of the, some of the poverty measures and adjust the SSR allocations in the foundation aid formula. So they're all in agreeance on that. The assembly budget calls for a 2.9% minimum increase to the foundation aid and the senate budget calls for a 3%. I think the executive's proposal was around 2.3%. So they're both looking a little bit higher than she is. And there's a couple of things that were included in their separate proposals that were not in the executive's proposal there. Moving on to number 11. That's in regards to expense-based aids. So the executive proposal in both the house, assembly and senate proposals agree to fully fund expense-based aids at the current legislative level. The executive proposal did not include this, but both of the other ones did, was to increase the adable BOSI salary from $30,000 to $60,000 over three years. So this is something that I keep trying to highlight is, you know, our BOSI's aid isn't a true 70% on things. There's deducts that come into play. And so this $30,000 salary cap, if they're, let's say that the BOSI's employee is making $90,000, there's a $60,000 deduct until our, before our aid is considered. So something we're always watching and being cautious of is, you know, to be aware of those kind of things. The assembly also includes a per-student increase in the library materials aid. I believe it's right around six-something right now, so that would almost double it. And then the senate has an increase for capital outlays. That's the one-year projects that we can get aid back in the following year. No, that would be, that would be phenomenal for last year.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, with inflation and material costs?
Right.
The $100,000 spend is nothing.
It's almost nothing. By the time you pay your architects, you know, your architects get 20% of that or so, you know, so. So that would, you know, give us, give us a lot more there. And then, you know, the senate had some stuff about electrification plans being eligible for transportation aid as well. So, you know, you can see some of the things that the assembly and the senate asked for are quite a bit above of what the executive asked for. And typically where it lands is, you know, somewhere, I wouldn't say in the middle. It's usually closer to the lower end where the executive is, but, you know, usually it lands somewhere in between. On page 12, that's in regards to universal pre-K. The executive, so the amount per student allocation for UPK has been $5,400 for several years now. It's harder and harder to get our community-based organizations to work with us when that number doesn't grow because their costs grow as our costs grow as well. So not only is it harder for them to operate, it's harder for us to operate because we have to put more local funding into that. This is something that Brian and I met with Senator Ryan about and discussed with his office about is trying to get an increase in this funding. And so the assembly proposed a $10,000 allotment max per student. The senate was at 6,700 per student. So, you know, and not only the allotment per student, but we're seeing the needs of these students, you know, they don't, they have the same needs as our other students and they're not funded the same way as our K-12 students. So, you know, we're really fighting to try to get an even playing field because we know, you know, research shows that the earlier we intervene with them, the better their outcomes are. So we're really fighting hard to try to make sure that these students are funded appropriately as all of our other students are.
And Bob, you just said that so well and I appreciate everything you just said and for our board and for the community to understand exactly what you're saying. When the state offers a program like this, we are treating all of the students as if they're ours. And I do wanna highlight important work that John and Cheryl and Mike Antonelli did to take care of a kiddo who was in a community provided UPK, who was definitely struggling. And the incredible work by Mike and John and Cheryl and Lauren and others at Sideway really came to the rescue and helped to move a child from a community provided setting to Sideway. And I happened to be there and I got a chance to meet the child. And what a difference in this young man's life. So just kudos to Mike and his team and John and Cheryl and Bob, right? For all working together to support a child. And clearly that is going above and beyond when a community provider was really struggling. So this, you know, the fight for these extra dollars is so important for our four-year-olds. So thank you for that.
On page 13 here, prior year adjustments. So this is kind of an interesting one, right? So both the assembly and the senate call for a restoration of annual funding to historic levels. So there is, I was in a meeting earlier and I believe they said that there's about $300 million in this queue. So what this is, is your prior year state aid is, so this would be a queue for any unpaid prior year claims. And it's kind of interesting, so they just redid some of this. If you owe them money, then they take it right off of your next April. So within a month or two. But if they owe you money, you go into this queue and you might never, ever see this money. So as of right now, there's about $300 million that they owe districts in this queue based on the funding formulas. Currently in the executive proposal, I think there was a couple million dollars in there. They're proposing to bring it to 18 million, but, you know, that's, that's not gonna put it into a $300 million queue anytime soon, even if they do that. So it's a little disheartening when, you know, they're not doing what they say they're gonna do and when it comes to our end of things, we've gotta pay them back immediately and we don't get the same thing in return. So it's a little frustrating to deal with those challenges. The next one down on there is to freeze aid at November runs. So essentially whatever was put out in the November runs, regardless of how anything changed with expenses or anything, the executive wants to freeze it at that. And both the assembly and the senate rejected that, reject that proposal to freeze that at the November runs. In regards to distraction-free schools, the cell phone ban. The assembly rejected the executive's proposal for a complete cell phone ban. And the senate proposed some modifications to the executive proposal. The next item is retiree salary cap. Neither the executive or the assembly did a proposal on this, but the senate did do a proposal to extend the waiver for an additional two years. There was also some talks about increasing the salary that you could make annually if you were a retiree. This, on slide 15, this is obviously something that we're keeping a very close eye on. Universal meals, a lot of uncertainty with what's happening at the federal level right now. This is one of the high priority items that they're talking about. So keeping a very close eye on this and, you know, hoping that this, all three, the executive, the assembly and the senate all, you know, put some support in there for this. But, you know, obviously if the federal, anything changes at the federal level with this, that could greatly hamper their ability to include this in the final budget. Page 16, zero emission school buses. Personally, I was hoping to see a lot more here. The executive didn't have any changes. The assembly didn't propose any changes. The senate did propose some changes about giving us some flexibility and possibly some waivers and things like that. So we'll see, you know. There's still a lot going on with this. This is another thing that we're not sure if the federal funding is gonna continue to support. You've got federal legislation that cuts it off, competing with state legislation that has it continuing. So we'll keep, keep a close eye on that as things progress over the next few months in regards to that.
Interestingly, I would say, my hunch is the majority of taxpayers in New York State are against this proposal, including the New York State School Boards, including Erie County School Boards, including, you know, Superintendent Niskus and so forth. So it should be interesting to see how this plays out and we'll keep an eye on it.
For sure. The next few slides, 17, 18, 19, haven't updated those too much, or actually at all. Those are things that we're still waiting for numbers to come in on, so.
Bob, I know, I know the difference in foundation aid is gonna go up 360 based on the governor's budget at 2.3.
Correct.
So if it gets to 2.9 or 3, that would be great. But is your hunch that it could be between 2.3 and 2.9? Or 2.3 and 3? Do you think it could fall in the middle or do you think?
Yeah, I doubt the middle. My hunch would be that it comes up to maybe 2.4. I'd be really shocked if it went over 2.5.
Okay, so the amount change won't be a significant change?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't anticipate that. No, for sure, always. All right, so going to 20, you know, that's all kind of stayed the same. We'll go to 24 where we've looked at some of the impact, or some of the, some of the requests that we've updated. So we did make some updates on slides 24 and 25 based on reviewing the requests and going back and having more conversations with the principals. So the total of those currently are at $598,255. For the next presentation, I'll have that, everything that remains that we decide we're gonna move forward with, included in our final budget number. And starting on 26 is where we start seeing the equipment needs that I worked with the principals on. So I worked with them to create a spreadsheet. And we kind of put things in three categories. There was immediate needs, short-term needs and long-term needs. So I've put that information together on slides 26, 27 and 28. Again, I have not included any money in the budget at this time for these additional needs. So hoping to have some discussion tonight to look for some direction on that and how we might wanna include some of this stuff in the budget. There's, there's a few of the smaller items on here that we're hoping that we can do this year and take care of those, some of those immediate needs, some of the smaller items on here. But looking for some input on, you know, how we might support some of these needs next year and into the future.
For the board, if we could just look, start at slide 26, the immediate needs and just if the board could give guidance to Bob so that we can come back at the next presentation with something simplified, that would be great. And I guess my first question, is this slide helpful to the board? The way it's outlined and structured? Well, just from our two words, I'll say the desks and the cafeteria chairs and that.
So I'm just wondering, can we run that as a similar program like we did like for the weight room or what we did for the?
Yeah.
Can we, can we somehow do like a three-year proposal or a five-year proposal and come up with a replacement plan? I mean, I understand this is an immediate need or, I don't know, that's just my thought. Like two-year? I, you know, I don't know, take a look at what we have and what's up?
Weight room stuff, we originally.
Well, right, and that's done. We did, we did in two.
We looked at financing that and, and the increased costs of equipment and it just made more sense for us to take care of that all in one shot.
And we, didn't we find that Jean Jean Fitness or someone could help us with that, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they held some prices for us for quite some time. You know, they, if we would've gone back out, and we did get other quotes and everything. But if we would've gone back out, the prices would've been significantly higher and the financing would've cost us a significant amount. By the time we did the advertising for that and all the legal costs and everything.
Because we're in, you're three of five for our tech equipment going into next year, right? So.
I would think too, like, the most important would be, you know, anything that had to do with education. So kind of like the touch screen TVs, I would think those would be at the top because of what the teachers teach, right?
Yeah, so I did talk to Rob at RIT, director, on those. She's got a plan through, I think it was the Smart Schools Act. The Smart Schools Act, that is one-time funding. We don't expect that to get more of that. But she had a plan, I believe, to replace 74 of those throughout the district. We're gonna order 15 of those at a time because, you know, it takes time to mount them and. We're going to order fifteen of those at a time because, you know, it takes time to mount them and, and do that. So we don't want to have seventy-five of these things sitting there, but we're going to do fifteen at a time. So those touchscreen TVs will likely be taken care of as part of that. So, you know, like I said, there's going to be a few of these things in here that we're going to be able to take care of for the schools this year.
Yeah, and I would think like student desks are important, obviously for students to learn. You know, I would think that we want to hit anything that has to be learning first. You know, cafeteria tables, uh, tables are important, but.
Well, I, I would tend to say whatever's in worst condition, right? Like I, I agree where learning is most important, but I mean, if the cafeteria table or we don't have enough of them, right? And if the desks are in better state.
I could work on coming up with a three to five-year plan and, and do it based on the enrollment at the school and then the principals, you know, would have a certain amount per year that they could then prioritize based on, on the condition of their, their furniture.
Yeah, I mean, I would tend to think furniture too, whether it be a classroom or cafeteria would also help. Not that they're hardly the real shoes, but.
Right, 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 right.
Academic sense, I mean, their lunches, their downtime a little bit, right? And if they're going into, you know, maybe desks that are old.
Yeah.
Kids are bigger now, right?
Some of those stuff is in really bad shape too.
As long as the classrooms, I mean, as long as the cafeterias have enough and the classrooms have enough. I, I mean, I would, I would need more to replace what's in the worst shape, right? But if we're, if we're concerned that the child's not going to have a place to sit in the classroom or a child's not going to have a place to sit in a cafeteria, then obviously those, in my opinion, would be the, the bigger need. But if we could kind of maybe look at what the dollar amount of what, she blanked on her name, can take care of with that smart school and kind of see, see what the finances look like. I mean, obviously, you know, we'd like to replace them as quickly as we could, right? I mean, we don't want children sitting in broken desks and chairs too.
Can you know, you started to say when we went on the tour and.
Yeah, the last few years, we've heard the same thing.
Yeah, for sure.
Especially at high school, some of those chairs and things might be a portion to the building, right?
I think I need to add them.
Yeah, so I mean, it's time for sure.
Definitely is.
I, I like that view, a two, three-year plan.
Yeah, I mean, once you can take out what can be taken with the smart school and we get a better idea, maybe, maybe it can be a two-year plan. I mean, wherever, I mean, you can take a look at what you think you can do as well, right? And then get things ordered that we can do this year and then into the next year.
And I guess what are we taking out to put this in? So that's my question, because we have like immediate, but these are a hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Where would we remove from to be able to put that in?
We don't necessarily have to remove at this point, you know, we, we could add on to, you know, like I said earlier, we, I haven't included any of this money in the budget yet. And our numbers are going to change quite a bit. So, you know, I did my original estimate that I gave on February third. I've got, I'm going to go back through every single number. A lot of those numbers have changed significantly since then.
So there's money somewhere?
Possibly, possibly.
I mean, I'm all for it.
You just said a foundation now.
Yeah, any of this could be in the capital improvement.
So none of this would really be adable in the capital improvement process, so we'll make a ton of sense. Usually half of the heat fixtures, furniture and equipment is not adable in a capital improvement project. You can do it, but it's one-hundred percent capital expense, same as if we did it now.
So some of this is available, you said the first temptation?
None of this.
No, 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 this.
None of this is available, so we have to find, we have to find money in our budget for this.
Or added on, yeah.
So I guess if we can find two of those numbers, then we have to find two, then let us see what a two, three-year program would look like and then maybe I'll take care of it something.
Yeah.
In order to fund some of this.
Like I said, one more question or two about if you could add it under, like what, this one thirty-three of immediate need, like what? So the total, does that include the immediate need, the six nineteen? Or is that?
No, that is, so the six nineteen is the short term, yeah. So that would be in addition to, so if you had all, all of the, all three of them up and not, not all of the principals included items for every phase. So, but based on what we have here today, I think it's right around a million dollars for all of it, so. You know, that's, how long do you want to kick the can down the road is really what it comes down to. You know, we didn't do much last year and, you know, the further we kick it down the road, the more expensive it becomes. So, you know, I, I kind of, my thought is we start picking away at it and, you know, just start getting some things replaced.
So were you looking to get this immediate possibly into this year's budget, this one thirty-three?
Uh, I, I could, I could, some of, you mean in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
No.
No.
Okay.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
No, so some of these immediate needs, I think we can cover in the twenty-four, twenty-five this year's budget. Not a ton of them, but, you know, some of the smaller ones I think we can take care of. So I, I could look at just doing the immediate needs for next year, that's one option for sure.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, so where are we to come out of our current budget then?
We'd have to add.
What, you're talking about twenty-four, twenty-five, that's what we're sitting at right now, yeah.
So, you know, the, the budget changes all throughout the year. So right now I'm in the process of, of, you know, closing our budget out. So once I get a better idea of where everything's going to fall, then we'll be able to make decisions on, okay, you know, we've got a little bit of room, we can, we can do this. So, you know, the, the budget's ever-changing, you know, every, literally every single day it's, it's changing. So, you know, we're looking at closing things out. So we shut most of purchasing down in, in March so that we can start closing things out and, and getting a good idea of where we're going to end the year at. And if we're in a reasonable position, then we'll try to, try to get some of these things done this year.
So if we have extra money instead of moving it to service or?
Correct, yeah.
Or use some of it or?
Like last year, we were in a very favorable position, so we did the weight room last year. It was a combination of, you know, looking at the, all the extra costs that it would have cost us and we were in a favorable position to do that, so those are some of the end-of-year decisions that we make.
Did we move any money into service or?
I'm not sure.
Yes, yes.
Does Hugh really not have any short-term needs?
We have cafeteria tables, that's my biggest need.
You're on the first and last, but nothing in the middle. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a miss for him.
Yeah, no.
I don't want to leave you out.
No, you're there.
We worked on this, you know, in a very short, short period of time.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything missing.
Yeah.
I don't want to leave Max out.
I appreciate that.
Well, I mean, it would, it would be, I mean, it would be great to know what, yeah, I think, I could think that she, is it, I mean, is it just these two?
Yeah.
Touching, so would be the six thousand, is that what we're looking at?
Correct, I think most of the other touch, touch screens weren't included on here. So I don't know that, smart schools is going to take a big chunk off of here, but, you know, we can mostly, you know, we're, we're looking at everything.
No, I know, I've just, and you're talking about this year's budget and the numbers, right? Like, would you have more of that information? I mean, does, I, I mean, if we could pick up some of that, I mean, thirty, forty of it?
By the, by the next session, I would, I will add a lot more.
Because it would be great to say that we could dump this on to next year, right? But I, I mean.
And these were obviously decided with administrators, they kind of came up with what the immediate needed, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, correct.
So these are already based on what they want.
Correct, yes.
So I mean, if we, if we could pick up a portion of it already this year, it would be easier to say, yes, let's just put it all in next year, right? So, I agree. I mean, that's, that's what I would love to say, but if not, I mean, when you're looking at this number, to me, it's almost a two-year. Maybe with more information, we could like sell it this year and.
By the next session, I'll have a lot more information on it before I think we're going to close up this year except your budget.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great to have it all done, right? And then, and then we could take a look at the short-term and maybe figure that out in the three to five year. If that's what you think short-term is, I, I don't know.
Yeah, we didn't really define, you know, the short-term or long-term, like what that actual term is.
Maybe that could be once we figure out, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
By the end of next year, if we could have, if we could have the immediate needs done by the end of next year, we could maybe define the short-term, long-term.
And immediate.
Well, I, well, this year, I've had this year, this school year finished out by twenty-six.
Yeah, if we can find the term, that would be great. Find how many years we're considering short-term.
Be great to have the immediate done by the end, once we've simplified this budget and move on to short-term.
Absolutely.
I'm sure that makes sense.
Sure.
Thanks.
So I just, I just wanted to share this with the board. The Great Island Teachers Association sent a letter to the board asking for some support with respect to building-based subs. It was a well-thought-out letter, a lot of information. In response to that letter, I'm asking the board to consider raising the daily rate of our substitutes. So you'll see that there's a chart here that says twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Shows the daily rate of a retired GITA, a building-based sub, a per DIAM certified teacher sub and an uncertified teacher sub. So you can see what those daily rates are this year. And then you can see the proposed changes, which will be significant. In this proposed changes, we would be asking the Board of Education to create some positions called district-based floating subs. That would be a certified substitute teacher that could work elementary, middle or high school. And that rate would be two hundred and five dollars a day. Building-based sub rates, that's traditionally just for a singular building, that would be two hundred dollars a day. Retired GITA would move from one sixty to one ninety-five. And it's a little lower than the building-based subs because this could be a retired GITA teacher who may only be interested in working a couple days a week or one day a week or three days a week. So that rate would be at one ninety-five. However, a retired GITA could become a building-based sub as well, but they're committing to four days a week. Additionally, the daily certified teacher sub rate would move from one forty-five to one seventy. And then the uncertified teacher sub rate would change from one twenty-five to one forty. So we tried to break this down by the hour so you can see the rate, the daily rate, the hourly rate. The last column is, is a little exaggerated because it just kind of gives you an idea if somebody were to work a hundred and eighty-four days at these rates, what, what could be made, but it would be very difficult, I think, to do that. So for example, you know, a daily certified teacher sub at one seventy probably wouldn't work a hundred and eighty-four days. So it, it does give it, extend it out that way just to kind of give you a sense. And as Bob shared with the board earlier, the Senate and Assembly and the Governor are still debating whether or not they're going to, there's going to be a waiver for how much a retired person can make in public education. Right now, the waiver does allow to be a lot more than the traditional thirty-five thousand dollar cap. So if there ever was a cap, this, this would be very attractive, I think, for district-based floating subs, building-based subs or retired GITA.
And to be clear, like the sub would choose to be a float and then the district would decide where that float would go.
Correct.
So that if there was a need, you know, in the secondary or they, they would make that choice and then the district would have that flexibility to say, you're going to go to elementary.
Yeah, exactly.
So that we have options.
And that's really because right now, I'm just looking at our elementary principals, I don't think we have a building-based sub in our elementaries, but we do in our secondary. So this would give that incentive to be available for both elementary and secondary. But because they don't, that person, if we have an applicant, they more than likely would go to elementary because of the vacancies that we have.
So we don't have a single building-based sub and single people.
That's correct, yeah.
I, I had one starting on April first.
All right, that's good, so. But we have allowed it for three per building and so that would be our first. But at the high school, I think we have three? Oh, just because you promoted, you promoted.
One promoted.
But you started the year with three, yeah, and two. So we have five, we started the year with five at the secondary. We recently promoted a building-based up to a long-term substitute position, so.
So Brian, I think these rates are just pretty competitive, right? I mean, I think we.
This would be a significant change and probably we would be leading most schools with these rates, yeah. All right.
Just let that one hop with the bridge.
Yeah, the bridge.
I just have the same thing. No, it'll be bigger though. Yeah, it'll hop with the.
The computer toll.
Computer toll is not that much.
I was going to say, if they come up four days a week, they might be eligible for the computer toll.
I know, I said computer, commuter.
The computer rate is good too.
At the last meeting, I thought that I did a great job in including this. This isn't necessarily part of the budget, but it does allow the board to see the needs based on the building condition survey and the work that Joy and Ashley and Roger are doing on the District Facilities Committee. So now all the board can see some of the priorities that were established in the building condition survey as we start finalizing perhaps what the board would approve, a future capital project with a vote in December. So these slides are, are, you know, for your information. Roger and Joy and Ashley are scheduled to meet on March twenty-sixth, which is this Wednesday, down at Young and Wright Headquarters to continue the conversation of the Capital Projects Book. So I thank the board for having this information and revealing it and being prepared for a future presentation.
So thirty-two does not have any changes on it?
So somebody's lamppost could have it.
Oh, not on that particular one, but it is on there. We will be discussing that in a, in a new sun. Make no promises, we got to determine the scope here. So slide thirty-three is, is the draft budget recap and then our fund balance at this time. As I've stated before, we're looking at using that, the capital reserve and the debt service reserve for our upcoming capital projects. So, you know, we do anticipate that money will be used over the next couple of years for those projects. So hoping to protect this fund balance as much as possible. And thirty-four, the tax cap calculator does not change, so thirty-five has not changed. Slide thirty-six is proposition number two. Still doing a lot of work with Teresa on, on figuring out a, a game plan for next year. So right now I have not changed this slide. It's got a budget amount of eight hundred and five thousand in, in there. We will be most likely decreasing this by one or two buses, which will bring us down, you know, somewhere in the, in the two hundred and fifty thousand range. Unfortunately, that will probably go towards contracted busing and then some. You know, we lost another driver the other day. We've got a, a few retirements and as of right now, I believe we only have one in, in the wings. So we are trying to increase our, our advertising and stuff, but, you know, when I talk to folks around the region, everybody's struggling in this area, you know? People are struggling to get drivers even with, you know, all sorts of incentives and everything else and it's just, we aren't seeing people replacing those, those leaving this area. Even, even the contracted companies are really struggling to find people these days, so.
There was a school dis, there was, there was a school district that just, there was a little bit of, no, a little bit of an uproar. They were, had to have been a quarter, quarter of a mile having to walk, was it?
I think you guys are talking about the same thing, probably Sweet Home.
Was Sweet Home?
Yeah, no, I did not.
Is that what you were saying? It was Sweet Home, quarter of a mile, busy streets, lots of concerns, but I think, I think it was able to save them six buses.
Yeah.
So I, it was just on the news, I, I don't know if you caught that. It was in the, Sherri, did you see it? I think it was just in the last couple weeks, I was like, ooh. So, I mean, it's just another sign that everybody is struggling.
They made a lot of big changes. They made a lot of big changes, you know, so, so obviously, they changed their walking radius. They also went to three-tier rate, I believe. They, they changed the schedules.
I think they added the walking, I think it was only, it was only a quarter of a mile, which is pretty close.
But I think it, it ended up only adding, like, fifty kids or something, which is why they did it.
It took six buses.
It took six buses away, so it wasn't, wasn't a lot of kids, but it was still, obviously upsetting the parents. What did you hear?
No, I was, I heard a few districts talk for a referral list, and I said, I would refer, I was trying to, I would get five. And they were hired to train after whatever month of employment.
I believe that was Sweet, yeah.
Five hundred dollars.
I, I believe that was Sweet, Sweet Home as well, Jay, and I, I saw Tom Feldman the other day. I asked him to share that stuff with me. So, you know, always, always open to new ideas, and, you know, there was a referral bonus, both, both for the new driver and for the referrer. So, you know, most certainly open to, to looking at whatever we can do to get some drivers here. So continuously looking at that, but I will have this slide updated for next time, for sure, with a plan going forward.
And just to be clear for our community, this may change. What is not on here are zero emission buses. It's gas or diesel.
Correct.
All right, the normal, the normal proposition.
Correct.
Thank you.
So I did, I did include a, a possible proposition third on the, proposition three for electric bus on the February third presentation. Is, is there any appetite to do that? Do we want to entertain that, or do we want to wait off and hold off?
I, I, I'm one to say I think we should hold off. I mean, especially with, like, you know, with the executive federal order saying no when the fight between our state and the federal government, and with all the unknown, I, I think, I don't know.
I agree. I think it would be hard to, you know, explain to the public that we're gonna vote in electric buses. Everything else goes away, and if there's an executive order that permits.
Perfect, so.
That's just, I don't know, whatever else.
That's just my opinion.
We agree.
Okay, perfect. We are still collecting information on it. We're still, you know, getting prices and things like that. I think Phil just sent me an email earlier today with a quote to install one charger in, at the bus garage. So we're still gathering information and, and doing every, you know, doing our due diligence, but, you know, just wanted to make sure that we discussed that. So, April twenty-second is our next scheduled meeting. We have the option to add Monday, April fourteenth, if you folks would like to do an extra special meeting for, to look at the budget again on that date. And then we will do the budget public hearing on May sixth, and then the vote is on May twentieth.
Bob's being very good here.
I, I, I would just say, for that April fourteenth meeting, I mean, a lot could happen between now and April fourteenth, if you see any alarming changes, and you think you need to address together, other than just we're making cuts, changes, right? But, you know, if we don't see anything, I think that meeting is in your direction, I would say, or the district's direction. If there's something we need to go in and discuss because the money has changed, or we see funding changes that are drastic, you know, change according to, I think that we, that we need to do that.
And it was late last year, right?
Uh, April twenty, I believe.
April twenty, so this is.
I feel like we had it being scheduled last year, right?
It did.
Kansas, right?
And, and I would also say, if something happens after that April fourteenth meeting, and you think we need to, we need to before that April twenty-second, because you think we could always maybe throw something together.
Understood.
You know, as long as we posted in that, that amount of time, and if we can get a, a majority of all of us and do the best we can. I mean, if it's gonna be drastic, it's, it's important for us to get together and discuss it, but.
Absolutely. We're, we're out there constantly trying to get a pulse, seeing how things are gonna happen, and so.
Yeah.
If, if something, you know, raises our alarms, then we'll definitely mention it, for sure.
Just get in touch with us, and we, we can put as many of us together in a room, we can put on screenings or whatever, and get that fourteenth date going.
Perfect, sounds great.
And a quick question. It looks like the child sub that we talked about as being, like, unhold?
No.
You're still thinking about it?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see an X in the, in that side. I'm guessing it's the X.
Uh, that was probably my fault.
Okay. Um, so I had a question about that.
All three, sorry, all, all three of those things under district are still, are, are on consideration.
Okay.
I just, just putting X's there.
Okay, but those were.
Correct.
Um, so I had a question about that position that I was just thinking about. I know that they would teach the teachers, right, and educate them on, um.
Stay on tier two, to everything.
Yeah. Is there a part of that that could have any type of education for parents? Would that be anything that they could add? Because I know that parents struggle a lot, you know, with behaviors and understanding how to help them at home with those strategies. And I'm just wondering if this position could maybe break out into a couple of sessions for parents and educate them how the school is doing it, and then they can do it at home, so that it becomes more.
I can say, I can say this for sure. I mean, that's definitely something, you know, that I'm hearing you say, but I can say this for sure. Part of that position would be actually working with the teachers, and then a lot of times, those meetings, there's I S teams, instructional team meetings, or child study team meetings, or just individual meetings. I would say that that person during the school day, during those parent meetings, for sure, would be talking to the parents about those strategies that they could transition from in-school to home. I think you're talking more about, like, a general overall session.
Yeah, you know, you do, you've done those sessions, obviously, throughout the year, like, not the hub, or, you know, I can't remember what they're called, but you add those ones, I mean, if we have this person, and you, or she is that knowledgeable in these areas, can we have these type of breakout sessions as well, and add it to kind of throughout the year, to say, hey, and you can focus on those.
Yeah, so, great suggestion. I can see exactly where you're going with it, and through Jessica Hutchings, there may be opportunities to bring in some guest speakers, not necessarily these teachers in special assignment, that would do a program similar to what you're saying. There's an excellent psychologist that we have brought in for our team, Dr. Mike Gettlebaum, right? Who could be somebody that we would invite or pay to do a session with parents. Also, we might pay a teacher to do the same, but just, we don't want to commit and say, in the duties, a teacher has to be after school unless.
Sure.
It follows the contract, if that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just thinking.
So I like the parent idea, though. I like the parent program. I think there are some experts in, and I know Cheryl is also working with a particular parent in the district that wants to do more with parents of children that have special needs, which would also open.
Yeah, that'd be huge.
A gateway to what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
I know, I met with Jessica Hutchings today, too, about the deal with continuing parents in the series. And one of the things that we're looking into our next presentations of the I D O H P, how to deal with that in school and at home. So that is actually our next session.
Yeah, and this kind of leads right into what you're saying. Yeah, because you're seeing more and more of these behaviors, right? And I think that parents are pulling out their hair at home. And I know I struggle with even helping with math or whatever, and my kids don't have I E Ps, so helping those parents that have even more, you know, needs and, I think, being able to do these sessions for them. If you had somebody who's that, how would they work with paying, or can we, can we leave this over? Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Merkel regarding the budget? Okay, thank you. That'll move us on to special education with Cheryl.
Right, I have two action items tonight, the normal CPSC and CSC program recommendations. So if I could have action on those, please.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections, any objections? Motion carried six, zero.
Thank you. And then the yearly guidance plan has been included into our packets. We do go over that as a P P S group. Just some of the highlighting changes, just so that you know. We did have the health league from the district health and all of this committee, we had that to it. We also put in the Viking Cares Initiative, K to twelve, in the plan. We did a lot, a lot of changing of faculty and staff from high school administration, our counseling staff, middle school staff changing, Huth and Keigabein, and also Sidway. We also added evaluation to beans, because if you remember, evaluation of beans has been solely in middle school for a long time. We did add it to fifth grade at Huth and Keigabein this year, so we added that spot. So it's just an update. I wanted to present it to the board before it goes on the website, which will then go up this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the superintendent's report with Dr. Green.
Yeah, thank you very much. Again, thank the board for all that you do for our community and our students. Today, we had the opportunity to celebrate Brooke. I think that was fantastic, to hold her medals and to see the great work that she's done. It's truly a testament to her and her family and all of our coaches and teachers. So thank you to the board to give her that special recognition. Here's John, part of the Viking, not the Viking, the Section Six All-Star Team. And I understand that they finished seventh overall, and we're very proud of John. I talked to him today, and he's excited about his next steps in the future. He's thinking about accounting, but he's still not even a senior yet, so a really great kid. And how about Carolyn Hartman? What, it's so quiet? Carolyn, you guys, you guys know Carolyn, right? Some people know. So Carolyn is our, he just was inducted into the Grand Island Hall of Fame. He leads all Grand Island athletes in the number of points that he has scored as a basketball player during his tenure with us. And he's an associate coach with the Florida Gators, and they just won again this weekend to advance to Sweet Sixteen. And Sue, would you like to mention the next honor he's gonna get here?
Oh, he is gonna receive our distinguished one.
That's right.
And I, and I have the Gators going all the way.
And those free pools that you're in, I like that, well done.
It's, it's through work.
Of course, yeah.
It is a through work.
I have some too, but it's free. It doesn't cost a thing. But this is exciting, and, you know, if you liked March Madness, this was a close game. In fact, Florida was losing most of the game, so to see them come back and win was very exciting. I was just very proud of Carolyn.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Yeah, and he gave us a shout-out on, on social media today, thanking Grand Island, too, and the Vikings.
Yeah, he knows quite a bit, if you follow him, he does, he does touch on his roots on Grand Island projects, so.
Yeah, and we're pulling for him, he's an associate coach, but CBS commentator's been talking about him as a head coach in the future, so he could be doing bigger, better things. So we're also excited to announce Mary Ann Garo and Chris Simpson will be inducted or provided the Western York Education Service Council Award for Outstanding Educators. It does conflict with our Celebration of Inspiration, but I know John is gonna be here for Celebration of Inspiration, and I'll attend this event. Cheryl, I know you, you've known Mary for a long time. I don't know if there's any, you know, you want to share with the board, anything that, yeah, you see. I, I have it in my calendar, yeah.
Five fifteen is the pre-dinner networking. And then six P M. is the start of the dinner.
Yeah, exactly. And I know Mary's done some great work with us for many years.
She has, and I think Felicia can say too, because Felicia did work for, you know, Mary's been a teacher in the district, oh my gosh, I'm gonna go with at least fifteen years now. Second to none, always helpful. She is the go-to person, has been in every single classroom, Felicia, correct? You know, just a really role model of a student advocate, so she really is deserving of this award.
And Chris, as everybody knows, has been teaching here for a long time. Obviously, he's an excellent coach, excellent teacher. But beyond that, he's very, very passionate about giving back to the community. Over the course of his time here, he has actually given Make-A-Wish tens of thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to support local children through Make-A-Wish. So he, he's quite the asset to our school district, so we're excited to share those honors with him on this important April thirtieth event. And this is exciting. We're, we're so proud of Kira Murray, who is the daughter of the Murries, and particularly our teacher Kevin Murray. So she was just recently given the National Exchange Club Award, which is an award and a scholarship, and she may advance. I'm just looking at Hillary, there may be some advancement after this, I think, but right now, this was a big deal for our, for our school and for Kira, and she's, I think you all met her recently in her top ten. So quite, quite outstanding students, we're very proud of her. And of course, we're promoting our cruise night, it was a big event. We were actually quite pleased with the event last year. I want to thank the high school, Hillary, and Jamie, and everybody who helped. It was a great event, and we're looking forward to the same thing. Right now, June eighteenth, five to eight P M., and it could be a rain date for June nineteenth if we need that, so we're excited about that. I didn't get a chance to put our meat raffle pictures in the slideshow. It was an excellent event, raised over four thousand dollars. I want to thank Sue and Ashley for coming, and Jude, of course, was amazing in all of her organization and support. And of course, the Grand Island Rotary, remember, that was to support growing readers, which is a really great event, or initiative. And we're partnering with Valley Part and Imagination Library, too, through the United Way, to, to support infants and toddlers and young preschoolers with a free book. So very exciting event, so thank you to everybody involved with that. And of course, the golf outings coming up soon. Probably tweet that advertisement, but we're excited about switching that over to Beaver Island Golf Course. So anybody interested in this, please let Jude know, so that we can get you a foursome for this special event. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the Board of Education report, Sue, we have a couple reports.
Yeah, so Brian touched on this, but I just, just want to mention a couple of things from the Sidway meeting. I, so from the council meeting, there was some questions on the staff directory on the website. So I did, I did ask the question at the Sidway P T A meeting, and there were quite a few parents there that were looking for the staff directory at, on our website. So hopefully, we'll get that up and running soon, because our parents are missing the staff directory. So it's just a convenient tool for us parents to be able to click in emails, choose, or find staff. And I've already talked to Dr. Graham about it, so they are working on that for all of you parents out there that are missing it. Another, another thing that has come up, that came up at this meeting, and has come up in the past, is Sidway does not have, from the parking lot to their playground, a walkway. So I don't know if that is something you all can talk about at the next facilities meeting. It's not a long distance, but they leave the parking lot, and then it's to the grass, right? Preschoolers use it, our students use it, I don't know. So I don't know if that's, I mean, they talk about funding it through their P T A, and it's, I don't know if that's something we can do at a district level, put it in a capital project, or.
It's, it's on, it's in our consideration.
Okay. Okay. So I just told them I would mention it. And then the other thing, you know, Jay, I don't know if you have mentioned it. I think you have one of your neighbors brought up having an open gym.
Yes.
So did you bring that up at the roundtable, or?
No, but, yes, there's been, I've, I've received questions regarding the availability of the gyms for the community, and whether, and how they go about this signing out or getting gym time at night for just informal pickup, basketball games and things of that nature, so.
So, if you, Mike, if you want to speak to it, Mike answered it very well.
Basically, the best way to go about it is through community ed, through community ed, or, or actually, we were pretty much, they were looking for more like just, they'll be to use the spaces, and I had to explain that that's not really possible, because once I go home, then there's nobody there to watch the gym. But if we have community ed of people that have the time to sign other things like that, it doesn't interest, but that would be a gateway to use it.
We also said that, he also said that it's very limited, like, especially this time of year. If there's athletics, he explained that, like, even some of the sports teams use the gym at Sidway. Like, there's a lot of, a lot of misconception that the gym's sitting empty, right? And they were, you know, I had, you know, they had talked about the open swim, maybe, or maybe an open gym. And, you know, I said, no, that's just on Sundays during the week, it would be difficult. They, you know, they were talking about those young kids in the winter, they're at four-thirty, right? They're summered for them to run off their energy. So Mike did a great job answering, I, I, but I did say we'd bring it up. I forgot, I forget who, I, I'm no longer the community ed liaison, I think actually you are. I mean, maybe it's something you could bring out, coordinate, whatever, I, I mean, through the winter, spring, I, you know. Just something where they can communicate.
I mean, maybe it's something you could bring out, coordinate, whatever, I, I remember the winter, spring, I, you know, just something where they can come in and run off.
Sure, I mean, I know in the summer, uh, when you have, when there's a sports camp, is it?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
You know, and it's, yeah, yeah, so.
Jude, Jude knows a particular person who loves running the sports camp, Jessica Brown. But, uh, to everybody's point, you know, there, uh, my own son, Sean Graham, uh, this weekend, because he's got spring breakers, like, Dad, can I use the gym? No, dude, you can use the gym. Um, but because, right, there's so many other layers, the supervision piece plus the insurance piece, too, so.
That came up as well.
Yeah, so it's a significant ask, so going through an organization like Community Ed or Town Board is the best approach.
That, that was, that was mentioned as well, so.
And going back to your other comment about the playground, could you just help me visualize what the ask is?
Again, so.
Mike can run you better.
When the kids leave school, it's the doors at the top of our building, and they have to walk through the parking lot to get to the walkway to the playground. So their ask is that, is the walkway from sidewalk to sidewalk?
Just between here and here?
Correct, they just want to be able to get from the building to the playground without having to go in the parking lot. That's the, or a train. Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's all, just, just a few things that came up tonight. Sorry, everything.
I just wanted to jog my memory, um, from one of the, the Sidway playground, because I do remember, um, building bricks. And there's like a brick that mine and Olivia's name on it, and it was fundraising, that went on.
So the bricks are along the walkway from the playground to the parking lot?
There are, but, and I can't, I, I know, because I have one there with my daughter. So, I guess the question I have is, what, and you guys got to help refresh my memory, because it's been a while, but the bricks were for the playground, the walkway, was fundraising attempt through the P T A?
Yeah, for sure, or a playground committee.
So if we're unable to get or find funding for it, is there a way that maybe we can explore that option?
Oh, yeah, you mean.
Like bricks or papers, what they did back in twenty twenty, yeah. I'm just saying, if, you know, it's definitely a great idea, because you don't want the kiddos obviously walking, but I'm saying if for some reason we can't get it in here, maybe a Plan B would be something very similar to what we did in twenty twenty, where we fundraised and, and we bought bricks, and we, we had the kiddos' names down there, and it went out to the community, and everyone, you know, put it in. And I got to tell you, Olivia loved it, like, if we go over there, she's like, how we working for?
Ah, yeah.
And sell, and she's going into sixth grade, and so.
I would hope that it'd be a safety concern that we can somehow make it into a capital project and get it in sooner.
That's my hope, too.
Because I think when they originally were selling bricks, it was going to be able to sign out for them.
So the bricks are by the time for the player, or they said bricks were sold to raise the money for the player.
Yeah, they were, yes, correct. So it was like the playgrounds and everything, yeah. So I was just thinking, if we can't do it for some reason, maybe a Plan B, so we could at least get it, is to explore that, just as a.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I had, um, graduation caps and decorating for seniors. Um, I don't know if the Board has any comments on graduating caps, um, I don't know if you're decorating, um, for seniors, being able to decorate their caps, or if we know, uh, Dr. Graham of other schools, high schools in the area that do this, or we can look into whether other high schools do this in the area.
Yeah, sure, I, I know Hillary has reached out a little bit, done some research, it is, it isn't a common practice, I just want to hear, even Loopport doesn't allow it. You know, from, from what we're gathering, we're just starting to gather some information, and it becomes a little bit of administrative managerial concern as well, yeah. And it's not just our administrators, it would be the teachers, too, trying to police some of that.
I think Niagara Falls does it, right? Pretty sure they allow it, I think I've seen it in pictures, um, you know, it's a pretty big district. I know that I graduated from their school when I was in my thirties, and I was excited to decorate my cap, so. I'm sure the kids that are graduating high school would love to, too.
I just think it becomes hard to police, right? And if, if, if a student comes with something that's inappropriate, um, I've, I've, I've seen it, I've seen it go awry, and I've seen, I've seen, um, it wasn't in this state or in this district, and a child was unable to cross the stage, and it was ugly. They, the district did it one year, and they haven't done it since, and they will never do it again. Um, the child broke rules, and there was no, you know, et cetera right in there, if your cap was not done correctly, you will not be able to cross the stage. Well, this cap was not done correctly, you did not cross the stage, it was a huge fit, and it almost ruined graduation. I, I think it's a lot of pressure to put on the administration, involving in there as board members. There's two hundred kids, excited, everybody's busy, we have the staff trying to line them up, trying to get things organized, now they're not actually wearing caps, right? Like, I love the idea, I decorated mine in college myself, um, I just think at, at, at high school level, um, I, I think it, I think it would be amazing, but I think it would be hard to police for lack of a better word, and I think it would be putting a lot of added stress to, to a day that I think is already very stressful for those who put it on, and you'll write a job first.
Yeah, I know it's a common practice at collegiate level, I just wasn't sure if any other local districts were doing that, and what they had in place to.
I was looking to chisel this up, so we'll do a little poll.
Yeah, I think, I think Niagara Falls does it, I'm pretty sure I've seen that, um, last year from.
We, one of the things I was thinking was that you would definitely need something similar to the parking lots with the contract and a parent's signature, and to see what the design of the cap would be, so, I mean, obviously, that parking lot has, uh, the parking lot spots had a little bit of policing and a contract that I remember signing as a parent as well, so I know that it would be additional work, um, along the way, but, and, you know, obviously something to police as well, so I don't know if there's, if it's a common practice, or if it's something that's not typically done.
Yeah, we'll gather some more.
But I, I definitely wanted to see our other districts doing it, and then if they are doing it, how are they ensuring that it doesn't go awry and that it is, um, coming off like a hitch? Because obviously, we wouldn't want to have anything like that on our hands that did not go off without a hitch.
I like, I like the idea, though.
I like the idea, I just, you know, obviously, we wouldn't want to have it, um, be a disaster either, with a student not being able to walk the stage. Okay, so moving on to public content session, general items not included, any agenda, we do not have any inside up for that. So that brings us to committing the whole items, information for the roundtable, beginning with Roger.
I don't know, so, uh, it's probably our student athletes and everything they accomplished, and, but, uh.
Uh, huge shout-out to the Wellness Committee, um, I think we're doing a district-wide Wellness Week. Um, I know for the middle school, I really, really loved, um, I think it's like Lock Thursday or something, when the kids, if they want to really, um, have them outside and do some walking, um, but I think each school has their own themes, the high school as well, so it's not just one school, it's district-wide, which I love. Um, that the districts all working together in it, and they're kind of building it up throughout the week, um, and it's just really wonderful for the kids and different owners. What are some things that you guys are doing, just so I can?
Well, I can, I can get a report, I can reach out, and then they will share it.
I know what the middle school's doing, but I saw it out there, but I know everybody's doing something, so that'd be really great to follow up on, so thank you guys for doing that and putting that work in.
Jude? Sue?
Um, I just really want to say, uh, congratulations to those who put on the meat raffle on. Saturday was a lot of fun, Thursday was well-attended, and hopefully you guys raised a lot of money for a great cause.
Joy?
I'm also.
Okay.
Good, thank you, good.
Good. Brian?
Yeah, also.
Okay, um, a couple dates, we have our joint meeting at the town, March thirty-first, so next Monday at seven P M. here, um, in the P V room. Spring recess, fourteenth through twenty-first of April, another Board of Education meeting Tuesday, April twenty-second, and, uh, that's all. So with that, if I can have a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting at nine oh two P M., please? And a second? All in favor? Aye, any objections, any extensions, remember, thank you, goodnight, everyone.